Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Steve Morello. I’m councillor to the chairman of the MTA, Tom Prendergast. I’ll serve as the hearing officer for tonight’s public hearing. I hope you’ll bear with me. I have to read a lengthy statement for the record and provide some instructions for how the evening will work. This hearing is to provide the public with the opportunity to comment on proposed changes in fares, tolls, and charges affecting transportation on MTA subways and buses, the commuter railroads, nine bridges and tunnels on the Staten Island Railroad. The hearing also provides the opportunity tonight for the public to comment on MTA’s proposal to permanently establish weekend service and expand weekday evening service on the Q-103 local bus route operated by the MTA Bus Company on Vernon Boulevard between Astoria and Hunter’s Point. To make the public aware of these hearings, advertisements were published in the Daily News, Newsday, The New York Times, Journal News, The Poughkeepsie Journal, The Daily Challenge, The Amsterdam News, and El Diario, and notices of the hearings were posted on the MTA website and in bilingual signs in stations, buses and trains, and notices were mailed to various interested parties. The MTA’s website, mta.info, describes these proposals in detail and includes tables of proposed fares for MTA’s commuter railroads, the Long Island Railroad and Metro North Railroad, as well as for the MTA bridges and tunnel tolls and proposed crossing charges. There’s a brochure out back at the table, which you’re welcome to, which provides these and other details on the proposals. And if you’d like, we also have staff to answer your questions out there, or you can fill out comment forms at the desks outside the meeting room. The public is also encouraged to submit written comments via our website or to mail comments to the MTA in care of Casey Morgan at 2 Broadway, 4th floor, New York, New York 10004. The staff at the tables outside can also provide you that address if you do want to follow up in writing. If you do not wish to speak but you have written comments that you would like to submit this evening, you can also hand them to the same staff at those tables or drop them with one of the ushers here in the room. This proceeding is not an open question and answer session. The members of the MTA Board of Directors who are here tonight, along with senior management, are here to listen to what members of the public have to say about the proposals, so that public comments are taken into account when final decisions are being made by the MTA Board on the proposals. So the board members and the staff here tonight will be listening, not commenting. As I said, though, there are expert staff at the tables outside, and they can take your questions. All spoken comments presented tonight, all the correspondence that we receive, all the emails that we receive, and all comment cards will be incorporated into an official hearing record. It is provided to and reviewed by the MTA Board. In addition to the hearings, and in an effort to provide additional opportunities for the public to comment, we hold four satellite sessions at which members of the public can offer comments that will be videotaped. The locations for these videotaped sessions are in the brochure, and the videotaped remarks will also be transcribed and entered into the record that will be reviewed by the Board. For the record, today’s date is December 3, 2014, and the time is about 6:08. And the hearing site is the Milton G. Bassin Performing Arts Center at York College, 9420 Guy Brewer Boulevard, Jamaica. And before we begin, I’d like to explain briefly how the procedures will work for tonight’s public hearing. I’ll call the names of people who have registered to speak in the order in which they have registered. It could be by mail or in person here tonight. If you wish to speak tonight but you have not signed up yet, please fill out a registration form before 9:00 PM, which is the time at which we will stop taking registrations for those who want to make comments. If you have pre-registered to speak either by phone or on our website, we ask that you’ve signed in. If you haven’t signed in at the table, please do so, so that we know you’re here this evening. I’ll call out the names of speakers in groups of two or three. When I call your name, please hold up the yellow registration card that you’ve been given, so that an usher can find you and escort you to the podium. When you approach the microphone, please provide us with your name and state any affiliation that you may wish to announce, so that we may hear from all interested people tonight, and so we can be fair to all who want to speak. Please ensure that your comments not exceed three minutes. The clock below will indicate how much time you have remaining, and when you’ve spoken for two and a half minutes, a light will light, and you should begin to conclude your comments at that time. However, I will not cut you off at three minutes. Remember, if you run out of time, you can submit your complete written testimony to supplement your oral testimony. This hearing site is chosen because it’s accessible to people who are mobility impaired. Sign language interpreter services are available. Your comments will be interpreted. This public hearing is also being video recorded, and it will appear on the MTA’s website in a week from today, under the section titled “About the MTA.” So we’re about to begin. Let me give you the names of the Board of Directors members and the senior staff of the MTA who are with us tonight. To my right is the Vice Chairman of our Board Fernando Ferrer. But working from the far left, we expect Ira Greenberg, a board member, to be here. To his right would be Mark Young, a Vice President of Long Island Railroad. Neil Zuckerman, a member of the Board. Alan Capelli, to my immediate left, a member of the Board. Mr. Ferrer, as I mentioned. Carmen Bianco, President of New York City Transit. Darrell Eric, President of MTA Bus. James Farrar, President of -- oh, I’m sorry. John Ballen, a board member. And at the far right, Jim Farrar, President of MTA Bridges and Tunnels. With that, we’ll begin to call on the speakers who have registered. From time to time, we will probably run out of registered speakers, and we will -- those of us here at the table will either recess here at the table or in an adjoining room, and we’ll wait for more speakers to arrive. In either case, we’ll be here till 9:00 PM. Our first registered speaker is Mr. X. Mr. X will be followed by Jason Chin Fat, and he by Darren Fignoli.
I can’t stop you from increasing the fares and tolls, but I think there’s something you should consider. You should consider how the MTA Police Department treated me over the years. They took excessive time searching my possessions. They used a bomb-sniffing door to search my possessions. They stopped me from entering 347 Madison Avenue twice. They stopped me from entering the 5th floor boardroom with my possessions first, then stopped me from entering the building with them altogether. Why, I don’t know. But there’s more. It’s been two years since the MTA Police Department deactivated my reduced fare Metro Card, because I suppose they committed a crime in 347 Madison Avenue 45 days earlier. They never proved I committed this crime. So as a result, I had to pay warrants in the street five times before the case was dismissed by reasonable doubt. It’s been two years since you held a public hearing at the Fashion Technology Institute. The MTA Police Department stopped me from testifying at that public hearing, because the board members had a restraint against me, yet they never served me a copy. Those incidents can and possibly force you to lose more money. Over the years, you said you lost money, which is why you had to increase the fares and tolls to begin with. But based on what I just told you, the MTA Police Department violated my rights. So if the outcome ends in a lawsuit and I win, you can expect to lose more money. Don’t come crying to me if you lose it, because I’ll ignore you. You need to consider that. It’s asking no excuse for the MTA Police Department to deactivate my reduced fare Metro Card. And from what I was told, no MTA employees are authorized to do that. And by the way, the culprit who deactivated my reduced fare Metro Card is here. Where exactly is he? Remains to be -- he’s in this building, just to give you a heads up. And there’s another thing. Within the last two years, you said you found $2 billion. So if you found or saved $2 billion in drug money, why are you increasing the fares and tolls in 2015? And there’s another thing that I misunderstand. There’s something that gets me. When Allen Heavisley was the State Comptroller, he viewed your record and discovered you saved $537.1 million in drug money. So where did that money come from? No answers?
Thank you, Mr. X. Next speaker is Jason Chin Fat. Good evening, to be followed by Darren Fignoli. Mr. Chin Fat?
Hi, everybody. My name is Jason Chin Fat. I’m a resident of Woodside, Queens, and I work some of my days out of Queens College, and some of my other days I’m working out of City Hall. And I’m here to just talk about the different fare options that you have on the table and how they affect me, and also my mother, who happens to live out in Merrick and is traveling to Manhattan every day. So combination of some of the things there. So I buy my unlimited Metro Card every month, you know, enjoy the tax-free benefits that I can use and purchase that. But I saw none of the proposals, no way of either maintaining or not increasing the fare for the unlimited Metro. Well, there were only proposals to increase the unlimited Metro Card on the table, and I was hoping that there would be an option in one of the proposals that wasn’t going to do that. Just because I get the benefit out of the Metro Card and I -- none of the proposals, I can’t support either one of them because of that. They’re not helping me. So my mom, she’s taking the Long Island Railroad, and she told me, “If you’re going to go to that hearing tonight, can you just voice my opinion?” That I feel like I’m being doubly taxed now, because I have to pay the fare increase on the subway and the Long Island Railroad. It’s rough. It’s tough, and she made the decision to move out to Long Island, so it’s a difficult decision there. But I know it’s not any of your faults that are sitting on this -- at this table here tonight, and that Albany needs to really step up and go after the bigger fish in the barrel, which is your capital plan. They really need to fully fund that. And for those of you who are -- who are appointed by any of the legislators that are not here, should make sure that you’re getting this message across to Albany, that they have to fully fund the MTA, fully fund your capital plan, and making sure that the riders can get some of those amenities that they feel would be worth it. You know, I talked to students at Queens College today, and they were saying, you know, “I can agree with a fare increase if I was getting, you know, that world-class system that we talk about all the time. I can agree with that.” But when you’re getting filthy subways, you’re not getting the countdown clocks that they promised on their line, they’re not seeing newer trains, and those are all things that your capital plan helps to fund, that’s where they’re not seeing the bank for their buck. So if you can make sure that you’re taking this message back, and it’s clear that Albany needs to do something, Governor Cuomo, you need to make sure that you’re fully funding the capital plan and making sure that you’re providing New Yorkers with the transit service that they need. And that’s all I came here to say tonight.
Thank you very much. Next speaker is Darren Fignoli. He’ll be followed -- thank you. He’ll be followed by Connor Dumphy, and then Anika Chowdhury.
Hello. My name is Darren Fignoli, and I reside in Queens Village, and I feel that the rise of this fare is not fair, because it costs $5 if you’re taking two buses or a subway. And I feel like how in a one week, this $5 goes up to $25. That $25 turns into $100. That $100 makes it feel like it’s a utility bill for me that I’m paying for, going to work and school. It costs us -- I probably make $140 every two weeks, and you guys are taking a whole paycheck from me, just so I can get from school to work. I feel like this is not fair, and that this price should not be going up. So that’s what I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Gus, we’re getting an echo effect that’s coming down from higher up. Can we try to eliminate that, so we could hear more clearly? So Connor Dumphy? We’ll call him again later on? Or is that him? I don’t know if it is. Are you Mr. Dumphy?
No.
Okay. How about Anika Chowdhury? Thank you.
Hi. So being a student from Queens College and being a Queens resident in general, the beauty of living like in such an environment is being able to get around easily, going out with friends, seeing experiences, experiencing cool places like Williamsburg, or spending a leisurely day at Central Park, or more importantly, getting to work in school. I use public transportation. And in order to afford some of the things I need for school or for myself, like a Metro Card, I work, because I’ve never been the kind of girl to take money from my parents, who work so hard to already give what I have already. I take the Q-88 from Queens Village to Queens College. The distance from my house to school is about four miles, a 15-minute drive, and a 30-minute bus ride. That is, if the bus comes when it’s scheduled to come. When I had my 7:45 class, instead of leaving my house at 7:00 AM, I have to leave at 6:30 because of the reason why when, even though it’s scheduled to come at 7:00, 7:10, 7:15, and 7:20, sometimes the Q-88 doesn’t come. It’s happened way too frequently for me to not mention. And I know that 6:30, as opposed to leaving at 7:00 AM, doesn’t sound like a big deal, but 30 minutes in the morning? Who can argue with that? So I think it’s important for, as Jason had mentioned, for the governor and the state to fund the capital plan, because if we are going to deal with increased fare hikes, then I feel like it should reflect on the amenities that we’re receiving, like the bus is coming on time, like it not passing us because -- and it’s not even full to meet like some time slot requirement. So I hope that you guys would be able to push for that. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Chowdhury. And Mr. Kessler will be followed by Bradley Brashiers. And do we have Connor Dumphy back yet? Hello, Mr. Kessler?
Good evening. My name is Matthew Kessler, member of the Long Island Railroad Commuter Council. The Commuter Council was established in 1981 by state legislature to be the legislative mandated representatives of Long Island Railroad riders. Our members are volunteers recommended by the National Suffolk County Executives and the Brooklyn Queens Borough Presidents, with appointment by the governor. I want to emphasize that these fare hearings are being held on the same date for Long Island and Queens, making it impossible for MTA board members to hear in person all of the public comments addressing Long Island Railroad fares. We have raised this issue in the past and are disappointed that these fare hearings were not held on separate days. It seems like we are in the same place that we were following Superstorm standing. I’ll bite, this proposal is less onerous than the 2012 version. The Commuter Council continues to have many of the same concerns previously expressed in past fare hearings. We firmly believe that Long Island Railroad riders must not stand alone in shouldering their share of the cost to support Long Island Railroad operations, and thus cannot support this proposal. There are several issues that particularly affect Long Island Railroad commuters. First, many riders will not only pay an increased fare on the Long Island Railroad, but will simultaneously receive an additional financial hardship with an increase in New York City Transit fares as well. This is unnecessarily burdensome, since many riders need to utilize New York City Transit to complete their journey. While there are small discounts for combined commutation tickets and Metro Cards, the discount does little to soften the blow of rising fares in both systems. Another issue is the fare structure as a whole, particularly at times on routes when capacity is available. Other transit systems in the region find ways to accommodate all kinds of riders. Why can’t we do the same here? Why can’t we do more to make Long Island Railroad an attractive alternative? It needs to be reanalyzed, and although the concept of changing policy may seem to threaten revenue, the long-term consequences are increased loss of potential riders utilizing their cars and other less inconvenient choices. Another issue is the practice that continues to this present day, where the state raids dedicated transit funding to pay debt service that had previously come from its general fund. Unfortunately, it promises to do so again. All the while, riders are being held hostage, yet keeping their part of this arrangement. Most significantly, these fare proposals do not address the fundamental issues facing the MTA. Riders already pay a substantial share of the cost of operations, recently estimated by MTA management at 55.2% for 2015. This is above 2014’s projected fare box operating ratio of 54.6% and far higher than other large American transit systems providing similar services. Riders need the MTA Board to take an active stance. The Board must seriously and carefully consider the implications of its actions and refuse to shrink from telling elected officials that more financial resources are required. If we do not find alternative means of providing monetary resources to the MTA and Long Island Railroad, every two years we will be facing a steady increase shift of the cost of operating the system to riders. We call on the Board to join with us in advocating for the MTA system and its riders. The Council knows that this Board is in a difficult position with costs that are often beyond its control, and has the need to borrow heavily to provide for the necessary replacement, rehabilitation, and expansion to the system. We ask you to understand that riders are also being stretched beyond their limits fiscally and economically, and to stand firm with them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kessler. Our next speaker is Bradley Brashiers, to be followed by James Jagliello. You’re here? Good, Jim. Thank you. Gus, we still do have that problem. I don’t know whether lowering the volume on the speakers’ mics might be the solution, but we still seem to get more sound from the high speakers that are drowning out.
We are working on the problem currently.
You’re working on it?
Yes.
Yeah, we have enough trouble here that if you don’t mind, we’re going to -- Mr. Brashiers, do you mind if we take a couple minutes?
It’s fine.
Try to fix this?
It’s fine.
Thank you. Okay. Take it away, sir.
Okay, Steve.
We’ve been joined -- I’m sorry. We’ve been joined during the interim by MTA Board Member Ira Greenberg at the far left. Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. My name is Brad Brashiers, and I am a staff transportation planner from the Permanent Citizens Advisory Committee to the MTA, which represents the New York City Transit Riders Council, and I’m also a resident of Astoria, Queens. The Transit Riders Council is one of three New York State legislatively mandated councils that make up the PCAC. The Council met to discuss the fare proposals, and the following reflects our thinking. The fare proposals that are the subject of this hearing contain less severe increases than those of the past, and we appreciate the positive concerns of the MTA in formulating them. However, funding all MTA components, including New York City Transit, must be accomplished in a way that is fair to riders and takes into account those who are most heavily burdened by fare increases. Therefore, we believe that a fundamental principle of MTA funding is that those who benefit from our public transit system should share in paying for its operation and upkeep. While this includes subway, bus, and commuter rail riders, it should also include motorists, business, and real property owners. All who rely on the vibrant economic engine that is the MTA region should realize it is only made possible because we have an extensive and efficient transportation system. However, we are concerned that these proposals to increase the fare only affect riders and will continue to shift the burden of funding the MTA onto the system’s users. This strikes us as being unfair, because there are no commitments of increased funding from other stakeholders. Riders have kept their fare commitments to financially support the MTA system. However, this structure which supports the MTA is constantly eroded by continuing threats to MTA funding streams, such as the use of what is supposed to be dedicated transit funds to meet New York State general obligations. MTA riders already pay the highest percentage of operating expenditures of any public transit users in the nation. In 2012, this figure was 53%, compared with 33% for systems nationally. Subway and bus riders pay 53% of operating expenditures, while subway riders alone pay a stunning 73%. The MTA’s proposals presented here reinforce an increase in the proportion of cost that is borne by riders. Since we have to choose only between the specific proposals before the Board today, we believe that regular users of the system should be less disadvantaged by a fare increase. It is for this reason that we prefer Proposal 1, where the base fare increases from 250 to 275, and not only keeps the bonus concept, but also raises the bonus from 5% to 11%, rather than Proposal 2, in which the base fare would stay at 250, but all bonuses would be killed. While there is no difference in the cost of time-based Metro Cars between the proposals, the roughly one-half of MTA riders who would benefit from the Metro Card bonus, especially low-income persons who have difficulty paying for weekly or monthly cards, would be harmed by Proposal 2. Those who would seem to benefit most from Proposal 2 would be mostly casual users, including tourists, other visitors, and those who only occasionally ride subways and buses. We strongly urge this Board to consider the interest of its best customers and preserve and expand the bonus incentives that are provided to encourage riders to use the system. Therefore, we clearly support Proposal 1. Thank you for your attention and views -- attention on the views of the New York City Transit Riders Council. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Jagliello.
Ladies and gentlemen, good evening.
Just a minute, please. I’m sorry. Mr. Jagliello first.
Oh, I’m sorry.
That’s okay. Thank you.
Yes. I’d like to know, why is it that sometimes we have problems with the text messaging system of the MTA users? I tried to get information about the Northern Boulevard Francis Lewis Boulevard stop on the Q-76, and all I got was this message saying, “No buses en route.” That’s wrong, because we know the buses are running, and that something screwed up somewhere on the text messaging system. That happens frequently, and it needs to be fixed. And sometimes the system is inaccurate and needs to be updated from time to time. And sometimes you’ll get -- and you’ll even get messages about buses that don’t even show up, and don’t even show up, or run late, or whatever, but something has to be done in order to fix the text messaging system, because it shambles at times, to say the least. In addition, and as everybody is saying tonight, and as everybody has said previously, that you’re hurting the poorest of the poor with these fare hikes, and these constant fare hikes every year, every two years, every three years. We need to stop it for a while. We should find some other ways as to generate money for -- and to keep our system running. How about raising the fines for offenses in the transit system, like fare beating and urinating in public and public nuisance offenses? That would be another way to do it, too. Speaking of the fare beating, a lot of it goes on behind bus drivers’ backs on a lot of bus routes, where sometimes people board the back of the bus without paying their fare. Why aren’t the police doing something about it? Why aren’t the bus drivers doing something about it? It’s not fair when one person gets away with not paying the fare, but everyone else has to suffer. It’s like, “Hurry for one person, screw the rest of us.” That’s not right. And what they should do is, on Rastway, there is a problem. What they should do is put plainclothes police officers in the back of the bus, and when they see it happening, take the person who’s away off the bus, issue a summons, and that’s a $100 fine right there. It’s $100 less that maybe we -- it’s a bit less money that we would have to shot in fare increases if the MTA follows that simple practice. And not only that, but we need to keep -- a lot of subways are filthy, and we also would love to see public restrooms in every subway station in the city, not just in a few, and open 24 hours a day, seven days a week. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jagliello. Danielle Hugh. Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, good evening. My name is Danielle Hugh. I attend Queensboro Community College in Bayside. I live in Brooklyn, and my current commute is four hours per day, six days per week. This is before you even consider delays. The time spent traveling is more than enough time to observe the conditions, and let me tell you, it is far from clean. I currently spend $120 a month on weekly Metro Cards, because I cannot I'm about to go into my last semester at QCC, and then I transfer to St. John's University. I'm currently taking loans to afford college. These loans do not pay for my transportation. However, I'm currently debating taking a semester off because I simply cannot afford the fare as is. If you raise the fare, you will take away my right to affordable education. And I know I do not stand alone when I say students and young adults deserve better. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yvette, to be followed by David Eisenberg. Thank you.
Hi. My name is Yvette, and I'm a resident of Queens for the last 22 years. I am currently, for the last three years, underemployed slash unemployed, and although I was working 30 years prior. I am living on my savings in part-time employment. I often walk up to eight miles a day because I can't afford the transit fare as it is. And I was hoping they would get the problem fixed quickly, because I got a transfer, so I'm using that to go back home, and then I'll walk the two miles to get to my house from there. I would like to request no increase in the fare or the tolls for the next three years. Please review the costs of MTA employees and official and executives who are currently issued free passes and look into the cost instead of increasing the fare. In addition, I have some concerns about currently, for the last three or four months when I do get on the bus, I'm waiting an extended period of time because the bus is not on schedule, and I do use the text system to see where the next bus is, because when I look at the schedule, two or three buses should have been passing when I've been waiting there 15 to 30 minutes for the bus. So I do the text message, and it tells me it's up to two miles away at times when I do this. Other times, it tells me it's a few stops away. And that's going westbound and eastbound on the Q-5, which is the bus I currently ride. And I also want to know what happened to the inspectors that used to be at various vantage points, such as Basely Boulevard. They used to be there to ensure that the buses were going, were being on time going eastbound or westbound. I no longer see that happen, and I guess those were the superintendents that would do that. So my concern is that there's a fare increase proposal being made, however, the service is clearly decreasing. And I can get from Queens at the Jamaica Parsons Station up to Harlem in a short amount of time than I can get from the bus going from 230th Street down to Parsons and Archer, because the bus has been going so slow. I know the mileage is now 25 miles an hour, but if the bus is going between 7:00 and 13:00, that's fast. And that's how slow the buses have been going lately. I've put in at least five different complaints with MTA because of my concerns about the slow service of late, in addition to the service not being on time. So what I am requesting the Board to do is review why we need the increase and look at all revenue sources to see where other cuts or revenue can be garnered in order not to make a fare increase for us, who are certainly would be hard, and it'd be a hardship for us. And again, it's truly a hardship. Like, I'm leaving here by 7:00, so I can make my transfer to walk the two miles once I get on the bus to go back home. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. David Eisenberg, who will be followed by Chris Corey, and then Benjamin Rosen. Mr. Eisenberg.
All right. Okay. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is David Eisenberg. Like many of you gathered at this hearing, I am concerned about the prospect of the NCA raising fares on commuters. As economic data has consistently shown, the cost of living nationwide has gone up, while the wages of many working Americans remain stagnant. This is as true in the city as it is across the country. I come to you tonight with a proposal. Maybe we won't be able to avoid these fare hikes, but in the future, instead of raising the fare on hundreds of thousands of people who rely on their subways, buses, and trains, and are already struggling to make ends meet, I propose that instead you raise the cost of advertising on organizations and companies such as YouTube. YouTube in particular is a website that is far and away the most popular video streaming site on the internet. It's owned by Google, which has billions of dollars and a vast international footprint. And I don't seem to recall the last time I took the subway and didn't see some YouTube advertisement at some point in my commute. I've seen it not just on the spaces above the seats. I've seen trains pull onto the platform with ads on the outside of the train for the channel Epic Rap Battles of History, which already has 10 million subscribers, and many of whom did not need ubiquitous ads to convince them to subscribe. I've even seen some L-trains plastered with ads for YouTube all over the outside of the train and on the inside, and you can see the ads on the ceilings and the seats. Now, YouTube is by no means the only company or organization that makes sure that our transit system is more covered in ads than ever before, but it's certainly the most obvious one. It strikes me as kind of insulting that even the turnstiles and Metro cards are covered in ads, but the burden of keeping our fine transport system running falls on the common commuter. I believe it would be worth your time to reconsider where to place this burden. I thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Chris Corey.
Gentlemen of the Board, my name is Chris. I'm a very hard-working New Yorker. I work part-time for a hospital here in Queens. I take two buses to get to where I am, the 12 and the 44 Limited. Both, in my opinion, are running very slow. My opinion to this is this: You're raising the fares. It should be a two-way street. Raise the fares, increase our bus service. Raise our fares, increase our subway service. Because I've been waiting for a bus for a very long time. I usually wait, if I have to be at work at 9:00, I wait almost a half an hour to 45 minutes, and I gotta be at work at night, and I leave very early to get to where I gotta go. It is impossible at times to get to where I gotta go on time. Also, with this fare increase that you want to do, you're raising the fares to 2.75 possibly, and you're going to raise the unlimited Metro cards to 1.16. That is going to be very, very difficult for many of us, including myself, who have a job and have other necessities that has to get done: shopping, rent, and bills. I strongly urge the Board to reconsider the proposal that you are strongly urging, that you are strongly going to do, and leave the base fare at what it is, but also reconsider the Metro, the unlimited Metro card from 1.16 to a little bit lower, because I think it would benefit me, my friends, and a lot of other hard-working New Yorkers as well, that this would be the better way to go. I thank you for your time.
And thank you for yours. Benjamin Rosen, to be followed by David Paul Gerber. Mr. Rosen.
Now, unfortunately, with these proposals, you didn't think them through clearly, because you don't accept pennies on the buses. And if you divide the 1.75, and you divide that, it's 1.37.45. So either 1.38, 1.37 is pennies, which you don't accept. So these proposals for the half fare won't be really feasible. So, and as far as the 1.16 for the unlimited Metro card, that should stay. The 1.13, the 1.16, that increase should stay, and we should have the base fare not go from $2.50 to $2.75, but $2.50 to $3. So we can have a $1.50 half fare, so it's even with quarters, and it's therefore a penny that you don't accept. That being said, and then when you have the 1.16, it'll be a much deeper discount. And then you can also do the, you can play with the percentages with the things, so you can raise that. Also, as far as he was, what he was saying with the Q-44 and the 20A and the 20B, I believe you need to have a 20C, which goes from Jamaica to Main Street and then turn. Same way with the other side when it goes, that would solve that problem. So in other words, you have a 20A, a 20B, and a 20C. The 20C being when they would turn and Main Street flush. And also, you need to, it's been over 30 years since there was a C train running from Bedford Park to, try to, what is that, do?
Rockaway Park.
Rockaway Park. That needs to be restored, because what you got now is two Sixth Avenues, and you need a Sixth Avenue and an Eighth Avenue on the D and the D line and the B line. You need to replace the B with the C. So those things need to be done. So like I said, let me reiterate. You need to raise the base fare from $2.50 to $3, so the half fare can be even. Have a 20C and an Eighth Avenue line on, instead of the B, going to Bedford Park Boulevard all the way down. Thank you.
Thank you very much. David Paul Gerber. Let me ask the staff back there, do we have any other registered speakers at this moment? Find out.
No.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Gerber.
All right. Good evening, everyone. This is the Queens edition. My name is David Paul Gerber. I have a blog called Gerber's World, and from time to time, I've been coming to these hearings. This is the Queens edition, and actually, I have an example here in comparison to the fare hike. The average time to raise a fare from public hearing to actual implementation is only three to four months. In the demonstration here, I'm asking, you can go to do this if you want to, that's okay. Go into the MTA Bus Time application and select the Q-5 or Q-85 route. You could do this, guys, if you're listening, you can do this on your phone. Looking at the bottom of the stops going southbound towards Green Acres Mall, there are stops listed as Green Acres Sterns, Green Acres Woolworths, and Sunrise Highway Cowdoor. These are stores which were closed like 2000, 2001, 2002. That's over 10 years ago. But you're quick to point out, you can raise a fare in four months, but you still, it's like 12 to 14 years before your data that you've been using for years, your bus stop data, the same bus stop data, which is also in Google Maps, the same bus stop data which app developers have been using through your MTA open source information, that you have three stores on your there which have been closed for over 10 years. Is there something wrong with the picture? Yes, it is. If you guys can take care of issues or errors in the same timeframe that you raise a fare, then I would be very happy. Unfortunately, it's not the case. Another thing is money. People have been standing up, and they say they've been complaining to raise a fare. Some have complained that fare evasion, especially on buses, is a problem. It is a problem. It's a problem when nobody speaks about it, and it's a problem, why should the people suffer? There's also another thing that I'm also addressing. The MTA Capital Construction Company, or MTA CC, they're the ones responsible for mega projects. Going to one detail here, the MTA East Side Access Project, which is supposed to be only budgeted about $7 billion, is now $4 billion, is actually $4 to $5 billion over budget, and will not open, be fully operational until 2020, which would be over 10 years, actually close to 15 years, since it was originally scheduled 2009. The MTA East Side Access Project is dependent on the Long Island Railroad's Third Track Main Line and Rockaway's Second Track. There's something wrong with the money. Something, they need to do a better job with the money itself before they put it on the backs of everybody else. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Gerber. At the moment, we have no additional public speakers registered, so we will take a break, reconvene at around 20:00, 25:00 after, or sooner if we get more speakers. Thank you very much. We're reconvening. We have two speakers, the first of which is Mr. Castillo. Juan Castillo, I think, is the next. Yes, here he comes. And Mr. Chapuis.
That's me.
Yep. After Mr. Castillo. Okay?
Really?
Thank you.
I'm black, I go second.
Oh, yes. I don't know why I waited any longer. It doesn't make any sense.
Hello, Mr. Castillo.
All right, all right. All right. Nice to see you again. You probably seen me from the other opening here about two days ago. Anyway, I come to speak to you about...
We don't need it.
All right. Listen, I come to speak to you all about the outrage of this propaganda. We are called fare hikes. Thank you. This kind of trouble has been making every single rider's lives feel miserable for so many years, and I've won, in fact, had just about enough of this tirade. I believe that we all deserve to take a break from all the fare hikes we have had over the years, especially the toll hikes, because recently, the Verazano-Nerro Bridge has been taking tolls for vehicles coming into Staten Island, where prices are going up to $15 or more. On the other side of Brooklyn, they don't, they don't charge people with tolls. So basically, Verazano Bridge only pays like a double toll for vehicles coming, coming I also like to speak about the Q-103, the 3 bus route, that recently, it's just extending, it just received weekday evening service and all weekend service, running every 30 minutes. I looked over the proposals for the fare increases. So far, I see Proposal 1, so all the fares increase, while Proposal 2 might have, some fares remain the same, others rely on different changes. Probably for the fare, subways and bus fares, and the toll crossings. I hope that for once, we, we either leave the fares the way it is or go with Proposal I believe one of them could help, help benefit riders, because we all could use it to take a break. Also, just two days ago, there was a, an activist party, they're, they're saying to bring elevator service to the 149th Street Grand Concourse stop on the 245, which is right by Hostel Community College. I believe that stop deserves an elevator. Another reason I come here is about the, the proposed Queens Select Bus Service coming to the Q-52, 53 on Cross Bay, Woodhaven. Some of them want, want that, others want the Rockaway Beach branch to be reactivated. I believe we will go with either that, or like have the Q-52, 53 Select, both running to Woodside, and then others going, the Rockaways. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Castillo. As you know, if, if you want to write to us with longer testimony, you know how to do that, right? You have our address.
I understand.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Daniel Marie Chapuis. Preparing right now. Preparing right now.
Like Ronald Reagan said, "I pay for this microphone." So, um, I'm impressed of the diversity of your panel. Everybody has gray hair. We have one black man and no woman. I'm here to advocate for the pregnant women and the disabled women and the strollers who have no place in the MTA because of the macho organization. I originally come from the most peaceful town on earth, Geneva, Switzerland. Um, over there, we have select buses for 45 years, like in Munich or Ankara or whatever. And you are the capital, capital of the world according to a former millionaire who stepped on my foot one day, and, uh, we had the same barber. He let him die. So, so what I want to say, I want to become a board member to support women because you are a macho organization. There is no woman on this board. We have one black man over there. Thank you for you. And, um, we have to change this. I'm an elderly, disabled person. I finally reached that step, so I'm going to attend the other hearings, but I would like to be elected, uh, a member of your board because we could improve the most retarded bus system in the world. In my country, and Munich, or other cities throughout Europe and China and all over the world, I've visited 55 countries and 27 states. I speak five languages and, um, understand 11. So I could help you. Uh, for example, the, the 86 bus, I used to live in the same building on 92nd and York with Mark Anthony. It takes, uh, 17, 18 minutes, 19, 20 for the slower people to go to the subway, and it takes about 30 to 40 minutes because the M66 is stuck all over the place, really. So we're going to change that. I'm going to sue the federal government, get trillion of dollars, and make the Second Avenue Subway, uh, reality in a few weeks, few months, few years, maybe two or three, not like the 7 train, who take seven years to, to, for one stop. So that's it. I'll be back, get some women on the board.
Thank you very much. For the moment, that's all the public speakers we have. Registration will continue until 9:00 PM. No, I'm sorry, but you're welcome, in fairness to others who have been here and were limited to three minutes, but you're welcome to write to us with more testimony if you wish, and we'll make sure that's included in the record. We'll see when we get your letter. Thank you.
What's your name, address, and to you?
Morello.
Morello?
Yes.
Do I dial it?
And Irish.
I don't like you, not very much.
You had to incite him.
Enjoy in the world.
Okay. Bye-bye.
Okay.
Uh, the time for registration ended at 9:00 PM, so we are going to, uh, formally adjourn this hearing, and we thank all of those who came to share their perspectives and their points of view with the MTA board and staff. We're adjourned. Thank you very much.